Call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. We'll start the evening with an invocation by Councilman McDaniel, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Hodge. If you'll please stand with me.
Let us pray. Bless this assembly as we attempt to work for the city of Cartersville, improving every day as we possibly can. As we continue the improvements of this economy, we're often challenged by those that wish for better things such as, well, it might be a lot about character, but raises, but I think that most, every person here in Cartersville, city of Cartersville, is blessed to have a job. Blessed are victims of the Japan earthquake. Blessed the family of the Lobo that was tragically killed in the autobus incident this week right here in Cartersville. My heart goes out to that family. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. To me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, please call roll.
Carrie Hodge, Councilmember Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Councilmember Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Councilmember Ward 3 is absent. Lindsey McDaniel, Councilmember Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Councilmember Ward 5 is absent. Lori Pruitt, Councilmember Ward 6.
Here.
Our first item this evening is the approval of the council meeting minutes from our March 3 meeting. Councils had these well in advance and tonight I'll entertain any additions, corrections, edits, or motions.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a second reading of an ordinance to our utilities.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is unchanged from first reading. You'll recollect that this is set up to allow refunds or allow administrative refunds for things, overpayment, that might include meter malfunction, line breaks, meter tampering, lack of occupancy, clerical errors, and computer malfunctions. It's not limited to just that, but this, particularly in these difficult times, allows us to work with folks on those. And it's up on second reading. I recommend it for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If there are none, chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. We have a presentation tonight. Greg, if you'll introduce that for us, please.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council. I've got Pam Ball here from Georgia DOT and some folks from Georgia, oh, I'm sorry, I don't get your name, but Pam will introduce you, I'm sure. I apologize. But DOT is creating some interpretive signage for what will be our trail at the Leake Mound site on 11361. And Pam will, and her West Georgia friends, will make the presentation on this. Thank you, Pam.
Hello. Good evening.
Hi.
Um, am I loud enough?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Pam Bachman, and I'm with the Georgia Department of Transportation. And here tonight I have with me Marcus Hoff, who is a graduate student with the University of West Georgia History Department, and Dr. Anne McClery, who is in the History Department as well. I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of a project we've been working on together for the benefit of the city of Cartersville and Bartow County. I have a few handouts. Can I just? So, the Leake site and trail, recreation and education. To give you a little bit of background on the Leake site, it is located at the intersection approximately of 60, State Route 61 and 113. And this is kind of a general sketch map of certain features that are at the Leake site. It includes two, actually three, but two kind of known location mounds and an associated ditch. And it is directly adjacent to the Etowah River. This was a site that was excavated as a result of the highway project there by Georgia DOT. And the highway project between 2004 and 2006, we had a team of archaeologists from Southern Research Historic Preservation Consultants to do what we call data recovery. And that is mostly a large excavation, trying to recover all of the information that was going to be impacted by the road project. And in so doing, we gained a lot of valuable information about this site. It's a very unique site. It's known to have multiple prehistoric components. I can give you a little more technical information about that at another time, if you'd like, if you're interested. But as a result of this project, also, we did a number of public outreach activities. And this project that we're proposing to you now is a continuation of that. So even though this data recovery was over in 2006, you can see we're still working on it because we think that public education is a very important component of doing this kind of work. This is a website called bartodig.com. It was actually done by Southern Research Historic Preservation Consultants, and it's still available. If you're interested and want to learn more about the Leake site in particular, you can still go to this website and learn a lot about it. This is a graphic that kind of shows the area that we're talking about, the Leake mounds area. And as you can see at the top, there's city property in the triangular space, and then county property below that. And then I'm also aware that there's city property over here, right adjacent to the end of the Pettit Creek Trail, I believe. And so these are kind of the areas that we're asking you to consider. This graphic was produced shortly after the original project by Southern Research Historic Preservation Consultants, because they were actually tasked with doing these interpretive panels. And as things happened, it fell by the wayside. So I've picked it back up now, and we have asked the University of West Georgia to complete this project. And so we found funds. No, I cannot find you other funds from GDOT. I don't know how I got these. But we found other funds, and we're making this project move ahead. This was actually a trail graphic. The trail is the yellow track that you see. This was proposed by Southern Research, and they proposed this with an understanding of the properties that the county and the city owned, and also an understanding of the major features at the site. So with the University of West Georgia, they have picked up where Southern Research has left off, and this is their proposal for the trail. And again, you see, this red line looks a lot like what the yellow line looked like. And it actually shows you some of the other features, mound A, mound B, and then some of the burials that were known from previous excavations. And this is an overview of what we call panel key, because this is an overview of the locations that we propose, or the University of West Georgia has proposed, for interpretive panels. They have been tasked with producing a number of interpretive panels to educate people as they walk along the trail. And they have proposed this number of panels based on the length of the trail and the certain features that they want to point out. And I'm going to kind of give you an overview of the outline of those panels, because they've done a lot of work. You can see a lot of research and effort has gone into making this an educational and recreational experience. So this is the panel key, where the panels will actually be located, and you can kind of see a little bit of an outline of those panels, but I'll have a little more detail about that later. This is the University of West Georgia's concept statement. They have recognized that there are many layers of history at the Leake site, and that they want to tell all of those, tell that entire history, and how this has been an important place for people for many, many years, and remains an important place. So their deliverables, or what they have been tasked with doing for Georgia DOT, is content development and research, the graphic design and the fabrication of 18 wayside interpretive panels in one three-sided kiosk. Now, I'll show you what those look like in just a moment. This is the kiosk. The kiosk has a purpose of orienting people to the trail area, marking the trailhead. It will provide an overview of the information that will actually be on the later panels, and it will be something that's accessible. This is an element that we envision being in a parking area, immediately adjacent to where people might encounter the trail. And it would provide an opportunity for people to have an experience and education if they couldn't take the time, or if they couldn't access the trail due to disabilities, or, you know, modifications for transportation, whatever, you know. They just don't have time to go and look at 18 panels, but they want to find out a little information, and they'll come back later, you know, hopefully. So the kiosk is mostly for orientation. And then there are 18 panels, and this is kind of a little more in-depth information about the topic of each panel. We put together kind of an advisory board of representatives from the city and the county, from the State Historic Preservation Office, from Georgia DOT, from the University of West Georgia, and from some of the consulting parties that Georgia DOT regularly consulted with, most notably the federally recognized Native American tribes. And we asked them for input. What topics would you like to see covered about this site? What are the important features you would like to see people educated on? You know, what are people interested in? What do they want to learn? That kind of thing. So these topics are a result of that interaction. That has occurred over the past six to eight months, I believe. And you can see kind of a little graphic. This is a profile of the panel with the top at a 45-degree angle and a post set in the ground. I'm not going to go over each of these topics, but you can read them. This is a visual graphic of the panel. And you'll notice that some panels are clustered, actually. This is a pretty interesting thing, where they're going to have a whole experience, where you can, it's kind of set out in front of you like a dashboard, you know, and you can learn multiple concepts at once. You'll see that along the trail at different points. A few more of the topics. As I said, we have 18 different topics, and we're still looking for input. You know, this is a process. So if you're looking through these and have a great idea, I'll give you contact information. You can let me know. This is an example, because Marcus is actually already working on these panels. This is a draft of one of the first set of panels that we've done. As you can see, it's very visually appealing. I think it's very engaging, and it's informative. It's supposed to be, you know, stop you in your tracks, in essence, and provide a little bit of information about this particular concept. So I just threw this in as an example. But these are currently in development, so this is very draft right now. And this is our schedule of work. As you can see, on July 1, 2010, that's when we gave the University of West Georgia actually what we call notice to proceed. And they have been working furiously to produce these panels. They're producing them in sets of six, actually. And so we've already gone through the first set, and I've distributed them for review by our kind of advisory team. They're currently working, well, we just got the second set, too, and I just sent those out. So we're waiting on the third set. And we then return comments, because there's a certain open comment period. And I return comments, and they make revisions, and it's a dialogue. So right now, we're kind of engaged in that dialogue. And the hope is that production, actual fabrication, you know, sending the design files away to get these panels actually produced, will occur in April. And that is supposed to take about two, three months. And so we ultimately believe that this task will be complete at the end of June. And here is a few more of the personnel on the project. Me and Dr. Thomas Foster, who is the laboratory director at the Antonio J. Waring Jr. Archaeological Laboratory there in Carrollton. He is kind of my counterpart at the University of West Georgia, because he's the project manager on that end. And Dr. McClery and Marcus in the History Department. Because we have kind of an ongoing relationship with the Antonio J. Waring facility, which is where many of the department's archaeological collections are stored. That was kind of where this idea was born out of, and also where a lot of the information is stored. So obviously, it's a natural kind of pass-through for the project itself. So these are our partners, and we're, we've had a great experience thus far, and we're here tonight to kind of give you an awareness about this project and to ask for your support, because we have, have already made a presentation to the county, and they have pledged their support. And we'd like to see the city consider this in the same, because as you see, the trail proposal involves both county and city property. And so we'd like to see a partnership form. This is our kind of proposal for trail development. We make the point that the Leake site is a unique cultural resource and has benefited very greatly from city and county preservation efforts, and we would all like to see this work continue. It is really amazing what the city of Cartersville and the county of Bartow have done in historic preservation. I'm really overwhelmed by the amount of property that y'all own and the recognition that you have about this site and in this area. So let me just say that, as an archaeologist, I really appreciate that and your commitment to it. So we're just kind of trying to help you continue that. As we could say, work can continue, the partnership between the city, the county, and GDOT. The installation of the panels and development of the trail will need to be locally driven. We are fabricating the panels, so we'll have them produced and ready for you, but we're asking you to install them and to develop the path along which they will. We're giving you all the equipment. So the trail could be a local community resource, offering recreation as well as education, promoting awareness and interpretation, continuing that preservation for the public. And we'd make the point that the trail should be context-sensitive and developed with the consideration of the site's remaining features. You know, that's why I kind of put these pictures here. It, you know, may not be a concrete path, you know. It can be a low-key, kind of more sensitive-to-the-area, natural, contextual kind of project. And we would just make that proposal. And also, I am pledging GDOT's support in helping with things like remote sensing and doing further environmentally evaluative work at the site, because the site does have certain features that if we were to continue with the development of a trail, we want to make sure we're sensitive to. There are still mound remnants in the area and burials in the area, along with pieces of midden, trash pit, and a ditch, et cetera. This is actually a ground-penetrating radar profile of the ditch, which was seen. We actually did some survey on the city property here in this area and located further archaeological remains. It's a really fascinating site. So we want to be sensitive to that, and GDOT pledges its support and manpower in helping that. So we're always on call for that. And finally, I want to introduce you to the kind of other part of this project, which you'll kind of see more about in the near future, and that is that GDOT is also developing an online digital archive to present access to GDOT archaeological collections that are stored at the Waring Laboratory. And this is interesting to y'all, because you're members of the public. You're an interest group as well. And you might be interested, hey, what did they find at that site? I want to look at those artifacts. And you will be able to, in a very short while. We are creating, along with this panel project, this digital archive, so that you will actually be able to look at the artifacts, even in 3D, and spin them around, and look at all sides of them, and, you know, browse the collections that the department has had, has stored at the university. This is kind of opening that information up, making, you know, archaeology transparent to the public. And the Leake site is actually the first collection that we've chosen to put into this digital archive, because it's such a unique collection. These are two initiatives by the department, and I thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to working with any and all of you in the future. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? I just, I appreciate the hard work that you've put into it. I appreciate your, as you mentioned earlier, picking up the ball and kind of getting this thing back on the front burner. And thanks to you both for all the hard work. It looks like, looks like we're going to have something we could be really proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to point out that little duck you saw up there, and that little pinched face. Those were all the backs that were found at the Leake Mound site when they did the excavation.
Yeah. And we'll be able, like, you'll be able to see this duck in 3D, measure it. I mean, it's really an amazing program. And all the other things like this effigy, this is a human effigy, duck effigy. There really are some amazing pieces of material culture at the site, and we're, we've contracted with the laboratory to show you that, you know. It's not doing any good sitting in a box. And that's neither for the public or for researchers. We want both, to be able to access this information. And so that's the kind of driving force behind this project.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have handouts for anyone, general public, et cetera, over here on the table.
Okay. Thank you.
And as Pam said, this area, the Leake Mound site, in the next year, it will undergo a draft transformation. There will be a trailhead for three projects that will be completed next year. It'll be the Leake Mounds, Etowah River Walk link. It will be the Etowah, well, we will budget for, as a partnership with Bartow County, for a sender trail on this site in this next year's budget. And I spoke with Steve Bradley, and we think that with our city forces and county forces, we should be able to do this at very minimal charge. But it's very exciting on this, on this area right here, because it will be decided several trails, as well as the history of that area. So thank you, Pam and Dr. McClery and Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Continue on, sir.
My next agenda item is engineering service for the Pettit Creek Trail Phase 2, which will also eventually tie into this trail system that we are, we're now working on. But this engineering services would be with GeoHydro Technical Engineers out of Kennesaw. They performed the same service for us in around 2003 with the third phase of the Etowah River Walk, the area that's along the river. They were able to save us about half what we spent, which is about $120,000 in savings that we, that we saved by doing a soil cementing application as opposed to doing a regular concrete and aggregate. But I recommend the bid from GeoHydro Services for $7,900.
Any questions? If not, feel free to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Greg. Come on up, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm 20% Irish, so I take great pride in that. On a more serious note, I'm here to present you guys, if you recall, the city is working with an existing CDVG Supplemental Disaster Recovery Grant project that we're working with Habitat for Humanity to construct several affordable houses in the city of Cartersville. As a part of this grant, part of the conditions, we are required to recover any program income that is generated by that project. In this, in this particular project, that'll be generated by mortgage payments of the folks who end up purchasing these Habitat homes. So Habitat will be essentially turning the mortgage payments over to the city, and we are required to keep that, keep those funds in a separate account, which will be a revolving loan fund. The funds that are collected into this account ultimately can be reused for similar purposes, such as constructing new affordable housing. So in order to satisfy the requirements of this, we needed to adopt a revolving loan fund policy and submit that to DCA by April 1st. I've included a copy of the policy in your packets, and just wanted to give you the recommendation that we adopt that and offer you the opportunity to ask any questions, if you have any at this time.
Any questions for Tom on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Continue on, Mr. Quist.
Thank you. The second item I have for you, April 1, 2011, is the deadline for the upcoming 2011 CDVG application. City staff and several stakeholders have worked over the past several months to try to identify a worthy and competitive project for the city of Cartersville to apply for this round of funding. Ultimately, we have determined that a very good and competitive application would be a housing rehabilitation program focused in the North Town area of Cartersville. As you guys are all aware, we recently adopted a urban redevelopment plan for the North Town area, and this is an action item that really supports the policy statement that you all made. Essentially, the program that we have designed at this point operates as like a deferred loan payment program for folks who are income-qualified homeowners within the project area to borrow funds, essentially, to pay for repairs to their homes that they may, maybe not, can afford the full cost of. The deferred payment, so, for example, if you, if you took a loan of $10,000, it would be forgiven over the term of the loan. If it was five years, each year $2,000 would be forgiven, as long as the owner maintained good standing. There are several details that I won't bore you with at this time, but essentially, that's the way it's set up. There would be a requirement, a small requirement of an owner contribution to the project cost, ranging from 3% to 7%, that is based on income of the applicant. And we plan to contract out the administration of this service. We don't feel like it's something that the city can necessarily handle, all of the nuts and bolts of this program. We will obviously maintain oversight, as it is ultimately the city's responsibility to ensure that it stays within all the regulations and what to ensure that it stays within all the regulations and whatnot. But again, this is just seeking your approval to apply for the funding. There's no guarantee we'll get it. But we've been working very hard to put this together. And we'll continue to work hard to finalize the application and hopefully put something together that will be very competitive and increase our chances of receiving the money. The total grant amount that we're applying for is $500,000, and there is no match required on the city's part. Any questions?
And the urgency is there's an April 1 deadline, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
You board us with the details in the work session, so we're all comfortable.
Exactly, I've already boarded the details.
Any other questions for Tom on this item? And if not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Tom, again, I just want to commend you and Richard for your hard work. It's going to be a really good project. I'm hopeful we get the grant funding. I think there are some residents that will really have some benefits from this. So, with that being said, I'd like to propose approval for the CDBJ, blah, CDBG. Say that three times. Owner occupied housing rehabilitation.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Dan.
I bring for you a trust initiation agreement with Benefit Trust Company. If you recall, a few meetings ago, council approved investment advisory agreement for our pension fund, pension assets. Benefit Trust will maintain those assets and also provide monthly benefit payments to our retirees. I ask for your approval of this agreement.
Any questions for Dan on this item? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, I can say that without bumbling.
There you go. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Bobby, you've got the next three.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, back in December, mayor and council approved a third corrections unit for our public works department. Standard contract that the state puts together and it was done for, the contract was written for a year and it should have been written for six months, from January 1st to June 30th. They caught it, I didn't catch it. It saves us half the salary of the guard. So, of course, we recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, stormwater channel clearing Bruce Street to North Urban Street. I've got a map on the screen here as I showed you in the work session. Bruce Street, Railroad Street, this is the Spring City Complex you see here on the GIS area. This ditch channel that carries water all the way from Cherokee Place over here, all the way down through town, goes really close around behind the Spring City Complex and goes under a railroad cluster here. The canyon's all around, under North Urban, on down to, eventually down to Pettit Creek. The flash flood we had about two, two and a half weeks ago, one of these buildings here took some water in. This stretch of ditch channel that runs along this railroad right of way here, runs all the way up, in fact, all the way up to this magenta pipe here. You see it's a stormpipe coming out. This section of ditch hasn't been cleaned in many, many years. We haven't been allowed to clean it. We finally got the contractor that, that we got to help us clean the ditch south of town out, that's done work for CSX before. We got approval from CSX to go in and clean it. I ran it by our city manager. We wanted to go ahead with it for fear of not getting anybody else flooded in the area. We used inmate crews along with his equipment and his labor to do this. We'd like to recommend an emergency expense not to exceed $21,000 to clean that section. In fact, he's got, he's got all the major sections here cleaned already. But like I said, it hasn't been cleaned in many years. It's crossed ties, all kinds of stuff.
And just as a point of clarification, it's CSX right-of-way, so we have to ask permission to get on that property to actually do anything. It's not that the city hasn't wanted to clean it up, it's just a matter of having access.
Well, I've got three employees that have been with us more than 20 years that are on that heavy construction crew. And we were there working the other day, and they were telling stories several times that they pulled equipment up to try to work. And the railroad guy comes up and says, guys, you can't be over here. You can't do this. But we finally got it cleaned.
So, good. All right.
Let me ask you a question. Right north of there, of that building, doesn't the railroad people have installation up there?
Yes, they have their field office there.
So, they can look down at you, right?
Well, the train frequency is so much here, you can't hardly even walk out there and stand for 15 minutes without a train coming by. So, when you pull a piece of equipment up there and the train goes by, the inspector comes next. So, okay.
Bobby, I'm somewhat familiar with that ditch. What is there where that turns a corner that keeps it from washing the railroad out?
Right here, Sam?
Down at the corner of the building where it comes, you said it drained off, yeah.
Well, the blue line is a little bit, is drawn a little bit close.
Yeah.
It's not really that.
Does it make a right angle there, though?
Almost.
What keeps it from washing the railroad out?
Well, they've got some huge concrete headlamps poured in there.
Okay.
And it's, it's just, the water's just banging against it and that.
Okay.
But that complex is really close to that ditch, really close. It's within five feet.
Okay.
And funding from 2007 sploshed. The contractor, again, is Johnny's Grayden and Holling, and his E-Verify, E-Safe is on record.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this item? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, Bobby, please.
Next item, we've got, we've been so busy working everywhere else. We've got three smaller stormwater projects that whenever we get an inch and a half or more rain, these three areas take water, water from streets that's washing into the properties. We solicited bid proposals from the two contractors that we already have under contract, finishing up jobs on Granger Drive and Green Ives Cook Street. Johnny's Grayden and Holling is one, CH Kirkpatrick is another, to bid labor only with the city to furnish the materials on these. The local contractor, CH Kirkpatrick, got the bid at $22,974.75 for labor only. And the estimated material cost is going to be about $9,500. We'd really like to get these repaired before we get any more heavy rains. Again, the 2007 sploshed will fund this. And CH Kirkpatrick has E-Verify, saved documentation on record.
Okay. Question, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Bobby. Ed, you got to throw a lozenge? Got the next six of them.
Mayor and council, for the sake of brevity, I would like to comment that on all these items I'm about to present, we do have E-Verify, Safe documentation in hand. The first item is Tennessee Street Water Main modifications. This is a project that we have to eliminate a section of H-line under Highway 41 along Tennessee Street. We received bids from three different contractors. The low bidder was TJ Lyle and Company of Taylorsville, Georgia, who submitted a bid of $7,225. We recommend award the contract to TJ Lyle and Company.
Okay. And council, just, these, all these items are of similar nature and with the same department. It's all right with everybody, I'm just going to have Ed go down and have all six of these, and we just approve this one.
Well, I want to talk about number five.
Well, we can, we can discuss those as they come along and certainly pull that out. So, if you'll please continue, Ed.
The next item is contract for electrical work at our water pollution control plant. In order to fully implement the automated control system that we're working on right now, we need to do some electrical wiring modifications. We received bids on this work from three different contractors. Southern Industrial Contracting Company submitted the low bid in the amount of $37,945.3. And they are located here in Cartersville, Georgia. We recommend award the contract to Southern Industrial Contracting Company.
Any questions on that item? Okay, continue on.
The next item is for replacement of the power cord for the pump at the Kamatsu Pump Station. This item is aged and just needs replacement. We were able to get prices from two different vendors. Rome Electric Motors Company submitted a bid of $7,295.79. It's basically the same price as the other vendor. And they have the pump at their shop now, so it's more expensive to have them do the work.
Okay. I'm going to throw you a curveball now since we may have some discussion on the next item. If we could, chair will entertain a motion for approval of these first three items?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motions carry for those three items. Please continue, Ed.
Next item is for repair of the front gate of our water pollution control plant. It's motorized, automatic closing gate. We received prices from three different vendors. The low price was submitted by Controlled Access Incorporated in the amount of $6,250. We recommend award of this contract to Controlled Access. And this is to be paid for with a budget.
All right. Is there any discussion on that item?
The gate that you're in repair of, is it something that we continually have to deal with? Or is this just a freak thing, or?
Well, it gets a lot of wear. There's a lot of vehicles that go in and out. It's automatic opening gate, they're pretty heavy. It's been out of repair, and that was one reason why the operators just sort of got in habit of not having it closed all the time. And that's how we ended up having vehicles stolen while down there.
Have we dealt with Controlled Access Incorporated before?
I'm not really sure on that.
Are these?
But I do know Bart Sears at the wastewater plant did get these bids. And, you know, he feels sure that this will cover having to work with them.
I just thought it might be in our best interest to have a local company deal with it so that they're on hand a little quicker than somebody elsewhere. That would be my concern.
Jase, did I hear you mention something about Telenet?
Yeah, Fleetwood and Telenet are both local, they own companies. Online, what I've looked at online, it said they're originally, did you originally recommend Telenet, or was that?
Yeah, it was messed up. Yeah, it shouldn't be Controlled Access.
Okay.
Well, me personally, I mean, if there's no preference from the, from the water department, I would like to see, you know, we're talking about $400 to have somebody locally doing this. And, you know, as far as, I think maybe what you're alluding to is if it's someone that might need assistance with them being here locally, is that, are you opposed?
No, our policy is we recommend the low bid for the product that is what we specify. So, that's, we're pretty much.
As far as the water department, you can work with any of these through it?
Yes.
It's a little less than 6% difference for that. And council, that's why I pulled that one out. I knew there was some discussion in the work session. So, as Ed alluded to, that's the recommendation that they make, but it's ultimately the decision of council to decide what and who and what falls into those parameters. So, I lay it at your feet.
We're just handling this one, then we'll go on.
Yep.
We're going, yeah, we'll.
Well, I mean, I'll make a motion that will go with the second lowest bid with Telenet Systems, that's a local business.
Second.
All right, the motion is second. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Next item, please.
Next item. For repair of the lift pumps at the water pollution control plant. We received, well, our prices for doing the work, basically by having the pumps repaired in place, we save 50% versus having them pulled and repaired at a shop. We received prices from two different companies. Southern Machine Fabrication Company submitted a low bid of $29,960. Both companies are local. And we recommend award of the contract to Southern Machine and Fabrication in the amount of $29,960.
Okay. If there's no discussion on that one, I'll let you go ahead and with the next one.
And the final item is for a variable speed drive for a pump at the water pollution control plant. We received prices from two different vendors. Rome Electric Motors submitted a low bid of $8,348. It's considerably lower than the next lowest bidder, Flight Pump Company, $25,381.63. We recommend going with a lower bid just to explain the discrepancy in bids. The other company is the actual pump manufacturer, and they have a lot more vennels and whistles on their drive. The one we're recommending will do the job. So, we recommend Rome Electric Motors for $8,348.
Okay. Chair will entertain any discussion or motion for both of these items?
Make a motion to approve both recommended purchases.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And they're both approved. Thank you, Ed. We've got our monthly financial statement. Tom.
Hello, Mayor and council. We're looking at the January 2011 and comparing the January 2010 financial information. General fund revenues have increased slightly over January 2010 by $7,600. While expenses have also increased by $746,000. This is due mainly to increased operating expenses. Three years of revenues that I look at on a monthly basis, local option sales tax, we've had a slight increase over January 2010 level of $17,000. Police funds and forfeitures have also been creased over January 2010 leveled by $21,000. And building permits and inspections have also, well, they also, but they continue to decrease by $16,000. Water and sewer fund revenues have decreased over January 2010 by $282,000. This is due largely to the capacity fees not being, or the capacity fees being waived. Expenses have decreased by $159,000, and this is attributable mostly to lower debt service costs. In the gas fund, revenues have decreased by January 2010 by $44,000. This is due to less gas being consumed. Expenses have increased by $226,000. As you know, this time of year, we're still buying gas and putting it in stores. And we anticipate being able to sell that very shortly to other vendors. In the electric fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $259,000, while expenses have increased by $768,000. This increase is due largely to the cost of purchased electricity. Excuse me. In the stormwater fund, revenues have decreased since last January 2010 by $15,000, while expenses have increased by $379,000. The increase is due largely to the capital expenditures. Solid waste fund revenues have increased over January 2010 by $18,000, while expenses also, not also, while expenses have decreased by $134,000. If you remember, we purchased a garbage truck in 2010, early on in December. We have not purchased one, I believe we'll be paying for that in the month of February in the current year. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues have increased from January 2010 by $188,000, due largely to miscellaneous revenues. If you remember, we received a large payment for Kentucky Data Link for the completion of some data fiber network. And the expenses have decreased by $83,000, due mainly to lower statewide telecom communication payments and lower expense, overall operating expenses. My fault after dropping the last line. That is my report.
Just a point of clarification, because I misheard it right the first time, but after reading it again, the, in the water and sewer fund, the decrease in revenue to the amount of $282,000, you said it's due largely to the decrease in capacity fees. It's actually, I heard it one way. It's not the fact that we lowered the capacity fees. It's because of the less activity, that things aren't growing, that we lost that revenue. Okay. Just wanted to... Just wanted to make sure I wasn't the only one that misinterpreted that the first time through. But thank you. Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See you itching over there, Greg. Come on.
Mr. Mayor, council, we have our March hike coming this afternoon. We have two hikes, two organized hikes. We have a hike that'll be leaving at 10:00 a.m. that morning, and we have the Moonlight Hike that will be leaving at 8:00 p.m. that afternoon, and we'd like to have everybody come out. And again, you know, we've been having some great crowds out. The February Mountain, or the Moonlight Hike was our largest organized hike other than July the 4th, so it's a great family, it's just a great, we bring family out.
Leads at eight, right?
We leave at eight, yes.
Bring a flashlight and some water.
Bring a flashlight and water.
Yes, okay.
And this fulfills the Mayor Matt's March Mountain March for year two, but we're going to do it in the moonlight this year.
Mayor Matt's Moonlight March.
Some kind of alliteration. But thanks, I'll, looking forward to that Saturday night. The other thing I just want to point out, I know there's some high school students, we've had some visitors here tonight, the work sessions is when a lot of the discussion happens about the items that are on the agenda. It'd be easy to assume at times that we're just kind of glossing over the work that's going on here, but the truth of the matter is, just a refresher, the council gets this information from staff and the administration. On Tuesdays, we review the information. We talk about a lot of the items in our work session so that we're not here until 11 or 12 o'clock tonight in the council meetings. And I certainly hope you appreciate the fact that we don't do that. So, any other business for council? Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. Didn't get in the room for that guy.
That's a brand-new chair.
I always get worried on chairs.
I wondered what.
I just kind of put the chair right here.